At this time, I would ask everyone to please stand. It is with a heavy heart that I announce that this past month, actually this past week, we lost a child at one of our schools and last week, we lost a child at one of our high schools. So, we would like to have a moment of silence for Naun Amaya Garcia from the Dwyer Academy and from School 15, Naun Flores, 7th grade student. Thank you. Our condolences go out to the family, from our family here at the Elizabeth Board of Education to theirs. Me, all of our love goes towards all of their family and anything that we can do as a district, as a family, we will do to help the families get through this. Thank you. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present for this April 26, 2018 meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting is being recorded and will become part of the Elizabeth Board of Education Permanent Record. In order that the recording be properly, adequately reflect the proceedings, please refrain from talking while others are speaking. I also ask that you silence the sounds on your electronic devices since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded. I may have to ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. Thank you for your interest in the Elizabeth Public Schools. We are here this evening to hear the public express their views regarding the proposed 2018-2019 budget in accordance with New Jersey Statute 18A 22-13. And I quote, "On the date and at the time and place so fixed, the Board of School estimates or the Board of Education, as the case may be, shall hold such public hearing at which time the taxpayers and others interested persons shall have an opportunity to present objections and to be heard with respect to said budget and the amounts of money necessary to be appropriated and the various items and purposes for which the same are to be appropriated for the use of public schools in the district for the ensuing school year. Those wishing to speak for or against the budget may sign in up to the start of the public speaking portion of the meeting so that they may have the opportunity to speak. The sign-in sheet states the name, address, and telephone number of the persons wishing to speak." Before I open up to the public, I have a few remarks. I'd like everyone to know that this is a very exciting time in the Elizabeth Public Schools as the district continues to work towards its vision of becoming one of the highest performing urban school districts in the nation. The district has prepared a budget for the 2018-2019 school year with an emphasis on providing high-quality classroom instruction and a rigorous curriculum with the goals of college preparedness, career readiness, and on-time graduation for every child. As has been in the case in recent years, the budget also focuses on addressing our continued increase in student enrollment by maximizing and efficiently allocating classroom space. On behalf of the Elizabeth Board of Education, I would like to recognize the taxpayers of Elizabeth, whose generous contributions allow the students of Elizabeth, Elizabeth Public School to fulfill their potential and to become the future leaders of our community and beyond. Ensuring our students have the tools necessary to achieve at high levels requires striking a fine balance of the values and needs of our students, families, and taxpaying community members when determining the most cost-efficient and physically responsible manner in which to allocate local, state, and federal funding. Among the highlights of the 2018-2019 budget is the manner in which the district is addressing the expected increase in student enrollment. Due to the anticipated increase of 857 students next year, the Board has entered a lease agreement to secure the former Bender Memorial Academy located at 416 Linden Avenue. This facility will be used as an annex for the Abraham Lincoln School, number 14, which will result in the hiring of 19.5 new positions for the school. Overall, we will be hiring 84 new positions that will allow us to maintain the teacher-to-student ratio that were in place during the 2017-2018 school year. That means, we are able to address the anticipated increase in enrollment throughout the district without affecting class size. Finally, I am pleased to announce that the 2018-2019 budget includes a 0% local increase. We continue to make our best efforts to provide excellent instruction for our students while holding the line on tax for our city's residents. Once again, we thank the taxpaying residents of our community who helped Elizabeth Public Schools to provide the City of Elizabeth with a high-quality, award-winning urban school system of which you can be proud of. At this time, the microphones are open for those who wish to speak for or against the budget who have signed in prior to the session. I shall call individuals to the mic based on the order of the sign-in. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes in duration. The total time of public comment shall be limited to 60 minutes. No individual is able to yield their time to another individual. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may address or question board members individually. The following rules for public participation shall apply. Time limits will be strictly enforced. No personal attacks on individuals, no vulgar or indecent language. A person may address the Board no more than once during a single meeting. Speakers should refrain from naming individuals. Comments or questions posed during public participation will not be debated. As a reminder, this is not a debate nor an audit, but an opportunity for citizens to present objections and to be heard with respect to the budget. At this time, I call Maria Lorenz.
Good afternoon. I came here today because I reviewed your budget, and it seems to me that it's quite unrealistic. With that, I will say that you have stated that you estimate that there is going to be a slight increase in enrollment for special ed. The numbers for autism are increasing on a daily basis in preschoolers with disability. One year from 2016 to 2017, we had approximately 89 enrollments, and you're estimating that you're only going to have 77. I don't see how that can be. In addition to that, we have special education students that are added district. From 2015 to 215, to a drop of 202 kids, that's a negative of 13 from 2016 to 2017, and you're only saying that you're only going to reduce that by one? That's extremely unrealistic. Okay? In addition to that, you're going to receive approximately 9.4 million in special education aid from state resources. Now, everyone complains it's been flat-funded, flat-funded. You're receiving 9.4 million, yet you plan to reduce in special ed instruction approximately 383,000 before and after-school programs, which are completely vital. You're looking at a reduction of 82,000, and summer school, $178,000. Where is the care for our children? Support services, you're reducing in guidance $19,750 when we're already understaffed in guidance counselors, and in health services, a reduction of $39,000. This budget really doesn't make a lot of sense to me when we're looking at children with special needs. It really doesn't. It appears to me that whoever put this budget together was educated at the J. Christian Bowe Witch Academy of Finance, where one of two things happened. We get our taxes increased, and you, the school district, doesn't ask for any more money from the city to fund and to fill those gaps. Or two, you start doing reductions like this, knowing that the number of special needs education students increases on a daily basis. It seems to me that none of you have stepped in the classroom to see where your fails are and to see where your gaps are. You have Trinitas that's doing OT evaluations for students that are mediocre at best, and countless students are losing their services because of inadequate evaluations. So, instead of cutting services, I would prefer that you focus on some of that, because we, the parents, suffer. Thank you for thanking me as a taxpayer, but I would prefer my money be used a little bit more wisely. Good evening.
Thank you. At this time, I close the public comment portion of this meeting. And I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for your firm commitment to being here this evening. A special thanks for all of the work that you have contributed to this process of developing an annual budget. I cannot begin to express the gratitude that I have for the countless hours that our principals, our vice principals, our supervisors, our directors, and all the members of the cabinet, all of our folks in our business department, our accountants, that have spent months working very long hours in order to develop this budget. So, this evening, it is my pleasure to be able to present the 2018-19 budget to you. I would like to thank our Board of Education for their continuous support. You invest a great deal of time in reviewing our programs, in reviewing our course offerings, and you ensure that we indeed live up to the motto of every child achieving excellence. And I thank you for that, because you invest a great deal of time outside of the workday in ensuring that you are at the table and reviewing everything that we are doing, and I thank you for your leadership. It's always important to be able to review where we are, essentially viewing our district at a glance. We are the third-largest school district in the state of New Jersey. We have 29 pre-K 8 schools, a total of 20 neighborhood schools, four magnet schools, three early childhood centers, two gifted and talented schools. We have a total of seven theme-based academies, and currently, based on our ASSA numbers, we are serving 28,557 students and growing by the day. So, as we continue to look at the ethnicity and the race composition of the district, we have 71.1 students that are Hispanic, we have 18.5 students that are Black, we have 1.6 students, I'm sorry, 8 students, 8% students that are white, and then we have the categories that fall under Asian as the 1.6, and then the other as the .8. We thought we would share with you also the composition of our students in terms of the percentages in each of the categories. We have 12.2% of the students that we serve that represent preschool, we have 63.1% that represent elementary, and 24.7% that comprise our high schools. And as you can see over to the right, the educational status in terms of the various categories of students that we serve, 11% being special education, 20% comprising our English language learners. We have also a 1% of our students that are classified both as special needs and also English language learners, and then 68% of our students that are general education. Our free and reduced lunch, we have 80.8% of our students that are receiving free and reduced lunch. You know, I'm incredibly happy to be able to communicate this evening that the message for this upcoming school year is not one about challenges. It is not about shared sacrifice, as I have communicated in years past. On the contrary, incredibly grateful to Governor Murphy for his support, for the fact that he has pledged his firm support for our urban school districts and education overall in the state of New Jersey. Our school district has received an additional $17.2 million for this upcoming school year. And that certainly is reflective of a governor that understands the needs of an urban school district. So, incredibly happy to be able to share how it is that we are investing these dollars. And also, I would remiss if I did not acknowledge the Education Law Center. The Education Law Center carried the torch for many years, reminding everyone about the struggles of urban school districts, reminders with regard to the Abbott versus Burke decision. And that has not fallen on deaf ears, on the contrary. Our governor has certainly pledged his support, as I stated before, and is cognizant of not only the funding that we're going to have in 1819, but also he has indicated that he will continue to support in the next four years. And that is just an incredible message for us, for all of us that are here who have gone through some very difficult times in years past. So, I certainly thank our governor and grateful for his support. We have always built a budget that follows our three guiding principles of equity, high expectations, and excellence for all of our students. Our work is also guided by our strategy map, our vision to be one of the highest-performing urban school districts in the nation, our promise to all of our students to provide an innovative and personalized learning environment that ensures that we are carrying through with our motto of every child achieving excellence. And the work and the conversations that take place each and every day in your schools and at the central office level all revolve around our goals: college preparedness, career readiness, and on-time graduation for every child. The strategy map has a total of 18 indicators that support six core areas which guide our work each and every day. And our foundation, our core beliefs and commitments, which we heard earlier this evening, our theory of action, and our three guiding principles that serve as a support for this organization. How is it that we define college and career readiness? Well, it began with the development of an equity goal. We believe that all students can learn and achieve at high levels regardless of race, ethnicity, culture, neighborhood, household income, or home language. You know, this language comes from our core beliefs. It is the first statement regarding students. Our commitment to this goal is to narrow the achievement gaps of students by providing a high-quality education to ensure that all of our students are indeed college and career-ready. We defined our promise goals and how it is that we were going to measure our work, and it falls into three categories. It is the commitment that by 2020, 100% of our graduates will meet the requirements to either enter a two- or three-year college, a technical school, or service to our nation, and/or will hold a license or certificate enabling them to enter the workforce, ensuring that 90% of our students enroll in at least one advanced placement course before graduating, and more importantly, maintain a 3.0 GPA or higher throughout high school. And lastly, 90% of our EPS students will graduate on time. This translates into actions such as ensuring that each and every student has their very own goal and action plan that charts the path for them through our school system. So, we're going to touch on some data, which I think is important to be able to share with our school community, which demonstrates that we in fact are making great strides towards accomplishing our promise goals. And it begins with the New Jersey performance reports, and as you could see here, what we have identified is our student groups, and then in terms of having achieved the targets in both ELA, which is our Language Arts, and our math. So, as you could see here, in Language Arts, we have met all the targets, and in math, we met 15 out of the 16 targets. And that is quite an accomplishment, and it's reflective of your commitment each and every day in our schools. The next slide is with regard to the participation and performance on advanced placement. And essentially, the slide is pretty impressive when you just look at the graphics themselves. But let me share with you some few details with regard to this data. So, 100% of our 11th and 12th grade students have enrolled in one or more AP courses compared to 41%, representing the state of New Jersey. So, once again, 100% at Elizabeth Public Schools versus 41.5 at the state level. The second category, students taking one or more AP or IB exams. Once again, you can see the data before you with regard to 100% at the district level in comparison to 34.5% at the state level. And lastly, students with one or more exams with a score of at least three on AP exams or four on IB exams. In our district, what is applicable is three on an AP exam. While at the district level, we're at a 22.1%, the state is only at a 24.3%. So, as you could see, that gap is in fact quite small. So, we're incredibly proud of this data, but it does not mean that we are not expected to be able to improve on these outcomes. The next data is with regard to our career and technical education participation, and as you can see before you, our career and technical ed participation and concentration rates also surpass those of the state of New Jersey with students earning credentials in health sciences. This is an area that in fact, we had been recognized for in years past, and as you can see here, we continue to make great strides. We're anxious to receive our 2017-18 data in order to be able to present it to our community and ensure that we are continuing to grow. One of the pieces of data that I present each year and feel that is important is, and I've said this in previous years, that we are not just a pre-K-12 organization, but our work is reflective of pre-K-16, right? Our work does not end the moment that our children leave our doors. Our work is centered on the fact that we have to ensure that our students are prepared to be successful when they enter college. And this data shows growth towards that target. As you could see before you, we have on this slide, which is, this data is reported by the National Student Clearinghouse, and essentially, it represents the percent of students that are enrolled in college the fall immediately after high school. So, what does this mean in terms of numbers? So, we had, our class of 2016 was a total of 1,339 students. 750 students enrolled in the fall immediately after high school into college. What we focus on in this district is on persistence rates. It's ensuring that our students not only are accepted into college, but that they are successful following their first year of college and are successful moving on to their second year of college. And that's part of this district's work. The second piece of data, also from the National Student Clearinghouse, has to do with the percentage of students that are enrolled in college at any time during their first year after high school. Some students do not enroll immediately in the fall. Some students enroll at a later time. So, this data represents 806 students during their first year after graduation. So, as I stated previously, it was 750 that enrolled in the fall, but then during the school year, it increased to 806 students. So, it shows that we in fact are preparing our students for college and beyond. I'm incredibly excited to be able to share with you this evening that our district was accepted to be part of the redefining ready cohort. This is a body of work that the National School Superintendent's Association has begun this past school year. There was an application process. We applied and were selected based on the work that we're doing around our equity goal, based on the promise goals, based on our steps of success, the various systems that we have put in place in order to ensure our students are college and career-ready. And this is really an opportunity to work with 75 colleagues across the nation in examining various indicators and tracking their growth and ensuring that in fact, students are prepared for college and beyond based on these specific indicators. So, I'm really excited to be able to roll this body of work out to our administrators, and I believe that it will certainly help us in defining the next steps for our future five-year plan. So, it's important to be able to share what the process is for the development of the 2018-19 budget, and in essence, there's a total of five phases. The first phase is, we begin by gathering input from stakeholders. The second phase is, based on the October 15 enrollment, otherwise known as the ASSA report, we determine the needs of the organization, and we then create a class-size analysis by individual school. The third phase involves determining the priorities and adjusting the budget accordingly. This includes numerous, not just one, but numerous face-to-face meetings with our principals, a review of all curricular inventories and requests that are conducted at the school level and at the central office level, face-to-face meetings with all instructional and operations directors, and then we also prepare a comparative analysis of expenditures for the 1718 school year, which helps us to develop the proposed budget for the following school year. Phase four is the budget review process, and that entails a line-by-line department budget review, and then allocation of funds within the school-based budgets that are based on enrollment, programs, and equitable need. We have one added step, which is, we have a thorough review that is conducted by our forensic auditor, and most importantly, a thorough review conducted by our Board of Education Finance Committee, who invests countless hours in reviewing the proposed budget. And phase five is where we are this evening, which is the budget hearing. So, the Department of Education outlines the priorities, the budget development priorities, and we then organize our work around these priorities, which I will review with you this evening. So, first is with regard to maintaining our school system, and as you could see, there's various indicators which we will be reviewing through the course of this presentation that support the category of maintaining our school system. Since the first category is adequate staffing, it's important to be able to share with our community the status of our school enrollment over the last 10 years. So, as you can see, in the 2007-08 school year, we were serving 21,308 students. We are currently serving 28,557 students, and you're able to see the growth over time in the various categories. In special ed, we're serving 3,131 students. Our limited, our English language learners, formerly known as LEP, we have 5,117 students, and we have 6,092 students, and this is at the time of October 15, which is the official report. We certainly have grown since then. So, within the 1718 school year, we grew in enrollment by 775 students. The way in which that was calculated is, I take the October 2016 ASSA report right up through March 20, at the time in which we are sitting with our Board and our Finance Committee and committee in order to review the projected needs. That was a growth of 775 students. We are projecting an increase in enrollment for next year to be an additional 857 students. And that's essentially calculated as a 3% over our current number. Clearly, we far exceed this number on an annual basis. So when we talk about adequate staffing, we incorporated in this budget new staff for 857 new students that we anticipate. And it's important to be able to share with our community the current teacher-student ratio. And you can see that information before you on the slide. It's important to be able to maintain an average of 1 to 20 students in K-5, 1 to 18 and 6 to 8, and in high school, 1 to 22, 9 through 12. This is the average class size that we currently have in our schools. And then as a further breakdown, in grades 9 through 12, in core subjects, your core subjects, ideally 1 to 20. And you can see the breakdown for Language Arts, for Math, for Science and Social Studies, which hovers anywhere from 1 to 19 to 1 to 21. You will see in this budget further details with regard to the 74 teachers that will be hired in this upcoming school year. Next category is increase in supplies, equipment, textbook allocations for new students. And once again, as I indicated, because you are projecting a 3% increase in enrollment, that also has to be reflected in your projection for instructional materials for that following school year. So as I stated, here is a summary of the 2018-19 positions that are included in this budget. We have four additional elementary teachers for grades K to 5. We have a Language Arts teacher for grades 6 to 8. We have two math teachers for grades 6 to 8, an additional science teacher for grades 6 to 8. We have three Language Arts teachers at the high school level, followed by four math teachers at the high school level, three science teachers also at the high school level, seven social studies teachers to service our high schools, two business education teachers at the high school level. Then we have six Special Ed teachers that span the grades of kindergarten through high school, 10 bilingual education teachers. And that's comprised of whether it's in-class support, or whether it is an advanced bilingual teacher or self-contained bilingual, and that's a total of 10. An additional ESL teacher, four world language teachers, and you will learn more about the expansion of world language in our presentation, three Phys Ed Health teachers that also span K to 12, two music and drama teachers, three computer science teachers, two instructional coaches, four school nurses in order to support the needs of our schools, six social workers so that we can move away from having the part-time social workers in our schools and ensure that we have full-time social workers, school psychologist, a learning disabilities teacher consultant, an additional school administrator, an additional administrative secretary, nine additional security guards, an additional custodian and head custodian, and a supervisor of custodians. So a summary of that long list of positions essentially translates to that we have increased the number of positions in the organization by 84 new positions. That is an additional $7.2 million that we have invested in supporting our classrooms across the board. As we move into a review of the academic programs, you'll see throughout the presentation, I've identified what it is that we are maintaining. And then what is marked by the starburst labeled as new represents what we've added to the budget. So as you can see, we have additional independent reading classroom libraries for grades K and 1, and novels for third grade to enhance our Language Arts curriculum for all categories, whether it's general education, bilingual, or special education. So those are new for the upcoming school year. What is maintenance is the Language Arts and Math refurbishment, which I mentioned earlier, is based on your inventories. And that includes bilingual ESL and special education. What is also new is, we're introducing a new curriculum for our eighth-grade math program and its Agile Minds. As we all know, the eighth-grade curriculum is an Algebra I curriculum. So we will be implementing Agile Mind Intensified Algebra. This is an extended-period course. It'll be implemented in all schools, as well as Agile Mind Accelerator. And that is the resource that ensures the proper support for our students at the middle school level. Once again, this will be implemented at all schools. We continue to support Teach to One for grades 5 through 7, and also Pearson System of Courses for grades 6 through 10. Also new is a new series of calculus textbooks for our AP Calculus course. It's important to note the grants that have been pursued in order to support the critical work that we do in our schools. There's an I-3 grant that is going into its third and final year. We were fortunate to have received this grant. We were one of four districts in the United States, the smallest school district actually in comparison to the others across the nation. And this has helped fund Children's Literacy Initiative in a number of our schools, and as listed here. So our budget supports the schools that are listed above, school number six, school nine, school 15, school 18, school 19, school 20. And then we leveraged our Title I funds in an effort to be able to expand the good work of Children's Literacy Initiative in the schools that you see listed next to Title I. School one, school two, school four, school five, school 13, school 14, school 21, school 28, and also 21 teachers in our self-contained Special Ed classrooms as well, that benefit from the CLI coaching and literacy materials. As I indicated before, we continue to support Pearson System of Courses. We see tremendous success at both school number four in our Dwyer Technology Academy, and this is being sustained with this budget. And as we continue, under our Academic Programs K to 12, we have Science Literacy Refurbishment, which includes all the categories, whether it's general education, bilingual ESL, Special Ed. We have what is being added for this upcoming school year. It's a new selection of bilingual resource books that will be added to support our English Language Learners in Science. We also have Social Studies Refurbishment for all categories, as well as World Language, Art, Phys Ed, Health, Library, Technology, Career and Technical Ed, our Promotion and Retention, which is our summer program in both Language Arts and Math. What is new, when I mentioned the World Language teachers in the previous slides, we are expanding the World Language program to include Grade III and Grade VII in this upcoming school year. We also will be offering theater in Grade IV and dance in grades K to 5 at the elementary schools. In addition, in accordance with our five-year plan, we have scheduled curricular revisions in 6 to 8 courses total in the area of Performing Arts. Always important to be able to highlight the grants that we are currently recipient of in partnership with various organizations. In order to support our work in STEM, we have a grant, a partnership with NYU, New York University. This is made available through the National Science Foundation. This grant went into effect in 2015, and it will run through this upcoming school year. And essentially, the emphasis on supporting STEM programs focused primarily on science and integrated language programs for our bilingual fifth-grade students district-wide. But also, the advantage of this grant is that it highlights language-intensive science and engineering practices, also with the focus on English Language Learners. Because we participated and we were so incredibly enthusiastic in working with NYU on this grant, we were considered for a second grant. So we are now partnering with NYU, with MIT, the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, and also Vanderbilt University. And they will be focusing on STEM and also computational thinking. So really exciting, this is the planning year, and we will see additional information that will be forthcoming in this upcoming school year, in the schools that will be involved and benefiting from this important study. So I always like to include new initiatives. And when I say breaking news, this is indeed breaking news, because we received an invitation just yesterday, on April 25th. And this opportunity was made available through our partner, Digital Promise. And it's an invitation to take part in a US DOE grant to support the integration of computational thinking into middle school STEM content through coaching. So imagine how incredibly excited I was to receive that call, because this dovetails nicely with the partnership with NYU, MIT, and Vanderbilt, which centers on the same body of work. So this is really a phenomenal opportunity to expand STEM all throughout the organization. So I wanted to be able to share that with you. This item will be on our agenda for the May board meeting. As I stated, this is literally breaking news and really exciting to be considered for the application. As we continue, under Academic Programs from K to 12, we continue to support the funding for the National Academy Foundation Partnerships, the high school level at Dwyer Technology Academy and at our Bowridge Finance Academy, our incredibly successful international baccalaureate program at school number 26. What we have that is new is that we are expanding the partnership with the Southern Regional Educational Board and Federal Express. This provides us an opportunity to expand Career and Technical Ed opportunities to include global logistic and supply chain management. Also, an exciting expansion of a program is the partnership with NJIT, Virtual Reality, which currently is being implemented at Dwyer Technology Academy. And we will be expanding this program to our Admiral Halsey Public Safety and Health Academy. Earlier this year, we had the opportunity to receive notification from the National Academy Foundation that after reviewing the implementation of the program at the Bowridge Finance Academy, we had received the status of being a National Academy Foundation Model Status Program. And that is very few schools in the nation that carry that title. So we're incredibly proud of the work that is being done at our high school, ensuring once again, that we are preparing our students for college and career. We have, in an effort to support our work with Career and Technical Education, we were the proud recipient this past year of a Building Capacity Careers Pathways Grant, excuse me. And essentially, this translated to a grant whereby we receive a total of $100,000 on an annual basis for up to $500,000 over the course of five years. And essentially, this provides the opportunity to be able to implement capacity-building activities throughout the organization, also including valuable professional development to our instructional folks, as well as additional services. This has also served as an opportunity to create memorandums of agreement and partner with various colleges in order to support this work. This is one of my favorite slides, because it acknowledges the work of our former supervisor of Career and Technical Education, Mr. Bauer. And really, he spearheaded this body of work. And really excited that we are able to not only be successful in implementing it, but also expanding the work moving forward. As I mentioned before, the partnership with NJIT for Virtual Reality Education, which is being expanded into Halsey Academy. And now we move into another indicator, which is Safe and Caring Initiatives. So this budget supports the contracts for alternative education for our at-risk learners, continued contracts for nursing services, for speech, for occupational therapy, for physical therapy, to support the contract with our chief medical inspector, for sign language interpreter services, and student drug screening. We are, as I mentioned earlier, with regard to expanding the staffing for the 18-19 school year, this translates to expanding nursing services. This budget supports the Substance Abuse Coordinator Services. We are also, as I mentioned previously, expanding social worker services and the continued partnering with the American Red Cross CPR training, which also serves as an opportunity for our students to become certified trainers in this particular area with regard to CPR. We are expanding our Child Study Team Services with this budget, and maintaining our High School Saturday programs, contracting for our behavioral services, and continuing to support the transportation services, which include, which include courtesy for students attending our magnet students, our preschoolers that live outside of a specified area, transportation for our homeless and displaced students, as well as transportation for our foster children. Another initiative that we have truly benefited from, which is a partnership between the New Jersey Department of Education, the Office of Special Education Programs, and the Bog Center at Rutgers, as well as the Robert Wood Johnson Medical School, and that is Positive Behavior Supports in Schools. So I've provided the timeline from the inception of the program in the 13-14 school year. And as you could see, each year, the Department of Education has really provided us an opportunity to expand the initiative. And this is really as a result of the successful implementation at the schools. And we are incredibly proud to announce that in the 18-19 school year, two additional schools will be selected by the Department of Education. I believe that this initiative has truly helped us to implement the appropriate incentives in our schools, so that our students can indeed be successful. Another successful partnership is the School Climate Transformation Project, and that is between the New Jersey Department of Education and the Blaustein School of Planning and Public Policy for Rutgers University. We were fortunate in the 16-17 school year to have received the Culture and Climate Transformation Project Grant to support School II and School 20. That grant was extended one additional year into the 17-18 school year. And we just learned, not about two weeks ago, with regard to the opportunity for two additional schools that will be selected by the Department of Education. So another opportunity to address culture and climate in the schools and to partner with Rutgers University on this critical work. We now move into home and school relationships. And this is comprised of the newsletters that are provided to our parents, our Power School, which is our student information system, our learning management system, which is ILEAP Next Gen and IEP Direct. This also includes parent academies, community education programs and community services, our K-12 central registration centers, both for the elementary and for the high school, and also the student and parent handbooks. The budget also supports communication materials and brochures that promote our school and district programs, the support for our district website and the operation of a video channel, and also the Critical Parent Seminars offered to juniors, to seniors, financial aid, and high school information sessions, which are currently in effect and very successful. This budget also supports the continued services under the IEP Direct, RTI Direct, and 504 Direct, which provide instant information to our educators so that they can support our children properly. Under Academic Safety Nets, we continue to support our Summer Remediation and Advanced Credit Program, our Promotion and Retention, which is our summer program in K-8 in support of Language Arts and Math, Home Instruction, our Reading is Essential to Adolescent Development in grades K to 3, Algebraic Thinking, grades 6 to 8, and Developmental Mathematic Understanding, grades 4 to 5. And those programs that I just listed service, provide support to our special needs students, the Recreation Program for Special Education, and the Extended School Year Program for our Special Education students. With regard to Before and After School Basic Skills and Enrichment Programs, With regard to before and after school basic skills and enrichment programs, we continue to support our three-day program after school in our K-8 schools, our Saturday SAT prep program in grades nine through 12. We continue to support credit recovery at the high school level, which has been incredibly successful, our Saturday rec program, our high school after-school clubs in grades nine through 12, excuse me. And under academic interventions, incredibly pleased to be able to announce that we will be expanding our Avid initiative to include two additional schools. And I'd like to take a moment to recognize one of our principals, Mr. Michael Ojeda, who is now an official Avid trainer, and we are incredibly proud of the work that he has done. And we're incredibly happy to have an in-house trainer available to us at any time, any day. So my sincere congratulations to you, Mr. Ojeda. We continue on with the refurbishment of our leveled literacy intervention systems, our multisensory reading programs for our struggling readers, the refurbishment of Mondo's Let's Talk About It, our oral language reading and writing program, as well as handwriting without tears. As we continue with our academic interventions, what you see before you are the math programs that support our students include Moving with Math for K-8, Math Excel, which is an online homework tutorial assessment system, and Touch Math, which supports our students at the lower grades. As I mentioned previously, and I think it's important to be able to recognize the tremendous commitment across the board in our schools. We have the Avid program at School Two, at School Five, at School Six, at School Eight, School Nine, School Twelve, School Thirteen, School Fifteen, School Sixteen, School Eighteen, School Twenty, School Twenty-three, School Twenty-five, School Twenty-eight, at Jefferson Academy, Halsey Academy, Dwyer Academy, Edison Academy, our Bowwich Academy, and Hamilton. And then credit to Mr. Goldblatt for having brought in the pathways training, which provided an opportunity to have Avid training onsite for, if I may say, unlimited number of educators during the summer and incredibly productive. And we continue our mission of expanding Avid and we will be including in this budget two additional schools for this upcoming school year. Our programs for our special needs students include Touch Math for Special Ed, our 504 related services, our extended school year, our contracted speech services, and as mentioned previously, our occupational therapy, physical therapy, and our ABA services, Rethink, our partnership with the Union County Ed Services Commission for transitioning our students who have reached the age of 21 so that they can be successful in acquiring critical life skills, the Autism Curriculum Encyclopedia, and once again, the Handwriting Without Tears that, as you could see, supports all learners. Our programs for our English language learners include our bilingual magnet Spanish program that supports grades four through eight, that is currently housed at school number 26. And may I have to give credit to our teachers because when the program was moved from School Twenty-One to School Twenty-Six this year, the teachers incredibly dedicated to learning about the International Baccalaureate Program, and I credit Mr. Titlebaum for the work that he did. So not only did he have to worry about moving from one building to another and creating a schedule that supported his goals and objectives, but also arms wide open and welcomed the bilingual magnet program and worked tirelessly with the teachers so that they understood the IB philosophy and supported them. So that bears mentioning and a credit to Mr. Titlebaum and for all the teachers in our bilingual magnet program. Another successful story is with regard to our bilingual magnet Arabic program that is housed at school number 29 and tremendous commitment on the part of the teachers and our director, Sandra Nunes, who has really spearheaded that initiative. Our point-of-entry program at the high school level, and I want to make special mention of the centralized point-of-entry program for at grade nine at our Dwyer Academy because the Dwyer Academy receives all of our students that come to this country, here for the first time, this is their first year in the country, and they are attending the Dwyer Technology Academy, this point-of-entry program, and being provided with a tremendous level of support so that they can transition effectively. So that tremendous credit to the design of that program. In terms of home instruction, we have our contracted providers for hospital home instruction and our after-school home instruction to support our students. We move into the next category, which is the athletic and co-curricular activities, and this includes our athletic summer camps and important to mention all of the athletic sports that are supported on an annual basis and ever-increasing enrollment of our students and we support them through our summer camps, through our middle school intramural sports program, through our high school athletic program, our summer band camp. We have a fabulous ongoing partnership with the New Jersey State Police and each year, Mr. Pursetula coordinates the top physical challenge, our YMCA Health Beat, our New Jersey Special Olympics Play Unified that we continue to pursue, and also our participation in Play 60. And speaking of Play 60, it's critical to be able to acknowledge the incredible commitment that Coach Todd Bowles and his wife on an annual basis have provided to our school community, and this is in the form of, and this is just one example of the contributions because they are numerous contributions that are provided, but there's an annual $25,000 provided to support our special needs students in the Special Olympics Play Unified program. As we continue, we move into another category that is a priority, which is student assessments, and this includes the high school graduation portfolio appeals. We initially thought that this was the last year, the portfolio appeals, but in the recent article that was published, we know that our Commissioner of Education has shared with us that we will be implementing PARC one additional year. So we will have portfolio appeals for one additional year in the 18, 19 school year. Our state testing program, all related costs are supported in the budget, our diagnostic reading assessment, both English and also the Spanish version, our PSAT and SAT, all those costs are covered for our students. The AP assessments are pre-IPT and our bilingual new entrant testing, as well as APA and the DLM, which is used to assess our special needs population. We have additional assessment systems for which we cover the costs for, which include NWEA and the VBM APP as well. And then we have the category of technology. And as we all know, we have a one-to-one initiative which right now spans from grade two through high school, in addition to the supports in preschool and in kindergarten and first grade that are provided in a variety of forms. So our budget supports classroom support, internal and external communication, technology training, individual school teacher webpages, the maintenance of PARC in terms of the bandwidth capacity, our staff email system, providing our students in grade six through 12 with their individual email and being able to support that successfully, and then the renewal of the numerous software licenses for literacy and math programs, our maintenance of equipment for our successful TV studio program, maintenance of the one-to-one initiative, EdConnect, which is our instructional improvement program, all financial systems, all HR systems and payroll systems, and the list goes on with regard to all of the systems that support our organization, inclusive of our telephone system and video confering system. We support My Access, which is a program, literacy program by Vantage Learning. We also support intervention and enrichment programs, and I credit our principals with designing programs that truly engage students and motivate them. There's programs such as Destination Imagination, which our students compete on a national level, the First Legal League, Girls Who Code, Engineering is Elementary, our NASA Explorer School, Technology Student Association, organizations such as Khan Academy, which provide valuable support in our math classes as a supplementary resource. We support as a technology system, Microsoft Translator with one-to-one mobile devices, and that helps our students to be able to translate written and verbal languages. At Microsoft OneNote and Classroom Note and Ten Marks, which is a math curriculum that supports students first grade through Algebra II. Everything under technology is referred to as our ILEAP personalized learning. We have valuable resources in our technology department, which include technology instructional coaches that certainly work collaboratively with all of our teachers in order to provide that ease and properly facilitated lessons. We move into next bucket, which is raising standards and expanding opportunities. And what you will see here is a couple of categories that support this category, the first being, what resources do we have in place that help us to work towards closing the achievement gap for each student? Well, we have a guidance counselor that tracks and monitors the added district placements of special needs students. We have leveled curricular material and culturally relevant supplemental classroom libraries across all of our schools at the elementary level. We, as I mentioned previously, we have the Spanish and the Arabic Magnet and Point-of-Entry Program for English language learners, native language curricular materials. We have the EdConnect data system, which identifies the strengths and weaknesses of each student. We have consultants that we work with to examine the curriculum of inclusion, which include Mr. Taylor and Mr. Clinton Miller as well, who have dedicated their personal time at no cost to the district to help us to examine our curriculum of inclusion and to participate in meetings with all of our supervisors and our directors, and have just been incredibly thoughtful in their approach and interested in moving forward and working with our students. We have the 15-hour sheltered instruction module for all of our instructors, which ensures that all of our teachers are able to respond appropriately to their students' needs. We have the summer transition program that had been piloted last summer and was a true success, and that was the opportunity to have our eighth graders take their language arts and math courses at a high school setting. I want to credit our high school principals because they took the time to come and spend quality time with our students in that program and ensuring that they provided an appropriate transition to ninth grade, that they explained the requirements of attendance and the credit requirements, really took the time to provide an almost one-on-one support to our students so that they would be assured success in that first year of ninth grade. In terms of college and career readiness, we continue with our commitment to dual enrollment programs, and that is in the form of maintaining valuable partnerships with NJIT, offering to students the opportunity of the engineering program, New Jersey City University at the Bowwich Finance Academy, and are pursuing a contract with Farrelly Dickinson in order to expand offerings to our students. We move into the visual and performing arts enrichment, and we have, under the leadership of Mrs. Montero, the teen arts program, which is a true success on an annual basis, our summer arts institute for students, our music theater orchestra, and our high school performing arts program, which takes place after school. Under the category of review of instruction, essentially that translates to our five-year curriculum updates and also the necessary review and revisions of our benchmark assessments, as well as the system that houses all of our evaluations and incredibly meaningful resources. We move into building professionalism. And with regard to this category, I'm going to share with you, this essentially addresses the importance of first-year mentoring teachers and new teacher training. We have a fabulous staff development department that works to provide new teacher training and also ensuring it works collaboratively with the principals on the mentoring program. It includes differentiated instruction, which is all throughout our curriculum. It includes personalized learning environments. Once again, the importance of the appropriate interventions that are designed by our teachers, and that's part of the critical role that Ms. O'Day leads in our district so that we are properly responding. Our English language arts, math training, and bilingual and special ed, we have our half-day and our two days prior to the start of the school year where we support all of our teachers, literacy training throughout the course of the year, professional networking on practices and new pedagogies, and then all of our departments that deliver on a monthly basis, quality department meetings and professional development. And I would be remiss if I did not mention the important work Mr. Vosser does in supporting the HIB law. We have a partnership with Montclair State University and that work revolves around the Build Grant and its opportunity where our teachers and our principals at the participating schools, School Six, School Nine, School Thirteen, School Nineteen, School Twenty, School Twenty-three, School Twenty-five, and Edison, that are the work that the teacher leaders and the principals are doing at these select schools is helping to inform policy, helping at a state level to be able to address what meaningful mentoring looks like. So this is critical work and we're really excited because we might have another breaking news happening shortly with regard to a grant opportunity offered through Montclair State University. Stay tuned. We continue with the valuable resource of Naviance, and as we know, this helps to identify the strengths of our students and their interests and linking them to those post-secondary goals and institutions. This, every year I talk about the fact that our high schools are accredited by middle states. We are starting the planning process for the re-accreditation of our seven high schools. So this upcoming school year, we will be going through the planning process. This will begin shortly in the month of June and we'll be rolling out this process to all of our high schools and it's opportunity to ensure that we maintain the high standards that we have in place in this district. Mr. Goldblatt, I believe you're leading this chart? We then, we're now moving into protecting our investment, and in this category, we will review those capital and maintenance projects that have been included in our budget in order to support all of our schools. And that includes a list of, as you see before you, everything from ensuring that we continue to convert all of our classrooms to having the highest standard of technology in place in the form of whiteboards, upgrading intercom systems at School Five, air conditioning in a small gym at School Six, and also replacing blinds, whether it's repairing the windows at School Seven or upgrading the master lock and clock system at School Thirteen, replacing blinds at School Thirteen, once again, installing whiteboards at School Sixteen, upgrades to intercom system at School Twenty, and continuing to convert chalkboards to whiteboards at our Jefferson Arts Academy. Our capital reserve and maintenance projects include auditorium renovations at two schools, UN events in the second floor classrooms and office, replacement of auditorium seats, new boilers at two schools, very important considering the harsh winters we're starting to experience, repair window lintels. repair window lintels, replace artificial turf, interactive boards, and also, as you could see at various schools, the replacement of the interactive cords. Now, we have a Lend-Lease program that we entered into earlier in this school year, and we talked about this at an earlier board meeting, and I felt that it bears mentioning at our meeting this evening because this program supports the finances in order to expand air conditioning to the schools that you see before you at School Two, at School Fifteen, at Schools Sixteen. It also affords the opportunity to replace the main roof and repair the parapet at School Four, replace roof sections at Edison, as well as School Number Twenty-three, overhaul two chillers at School Thirty and School Number Twenty-six, replace roof sections in the following schools, School Six, School Twelve, School Five, School Eighteen, and School Fifteen. This is a tremendous opportunity, and we're grateful for the board having pursued this work. And certainly, as you can see, this budget reflects not only the typical capital and maintenance projects, but this lease program affords us to put us on a fast track to providing the necessary upgrades to our schools. One of the most exciting, and our board president, Board President Carvalho talked about in her opening remarks this evening, was with regard to the acquisition of Bender Memorial. It will now, it will serve, following the support of our board this evening, as the School Fourteen Annex. Let me share with you what this does for our school community as a whole. It not only helps us to address the over-enrollment at Abraham Lincoln School Number Fourteen, but it also affords us the opportunity to open four special needs classrooms at this building. If we did not have this opportunity of pursuing this facility, we would have had to carve out an additional $2.3 million for the children attending those four self-contained special needs classes that would have had to, unfortunately, had to attend in added district schools. So this certainly represented an opportunity to expand and address enrollment in our school community, as well as it represents a significant cost savings in terms of our budget moving forward, and more importantly, keeping our children here in our community. So we will have a total of eight classrooms at the School Fourteen Annex, and as you can see before you, and the staffing needs that will be required, and as well as all other costs related to this facility have been included in the budget. So I will now turn the presentation of our financial data to Mr. Mahaltra, our comptroller.
This thing's not going to stay up. Can everyone hear me? All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to acknowledge our accounting team. Their hard work was instrumental in putting the 2018-19 budget together. I would also like to acknowledge every administrator in the district who helped in the budget process, especially Superintendent Huglemeyer. The 2018-19 budget is $536 million, which is an increase of roughly 4% from the 1718 budget. Once again, the Elizabeth Board of Education has submitted a balanced budget for the 2018 school year without raising taxes. The district is going into the next school year without any debt either. The revenue chart that you see up there breaks down the funds that we need to meet the needs of the district. Basically, we're getting $443 million from state aid. We're also getting five, almost $60 million from the local tax levy. Federal grants are giving us about $18 million. And to balance the budget, we're using $14 million in reserve. And as you can see, there's no debt service going forward. The next slide talks about the expenditures that break down our costs to run the district. $426 million of it is going to the schools, basically to handle all the programs for the students, special education, support services, the classrooms. We're also spending about $49 million on operations and maintenance of the district, talking about some of the projects that Superintendent Huglemeyer mentioned. Then we're talking another $45 million for employee benefits and transportation costs. And then there's about $17 million spent on the administration. The per pupil costs are, have all increased from last year. Well, basically, the total per pupil cost is $16,335 per student. Classroom instruction accounts for about $10,100 of it. The operations and maintenance of plant account for $2,300 per student, and support services, which includes health, guidance services, child study teams, accounts for almost $2,400 per student. The administrative salaries and benefits, the state allows us to spend up to $2,100 per student. Elizabeth keeps the administrative salaries and benefits pretty low, at almost $1,400 per student, almost 33% less. The 2018 budget and tax levy proposed is in accordance with the rules, basically just giving the guidelines on what's there. We prepare the budget based on those guidelines, and the instructions ensure that the budget and information submitted for approval to the Executive County Superintendent and Business Minister are complete and correct. Now I would like to turn it back over to Superintendent Huglemeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mahaltra. So it's important to talk about the return on our investment, because that's really what tonight is about, correct? This is a budget hearing. We have a huge investment that we make each and every year in a variety of categories, and it's important to be able to share with our school community the successes experienced throughout the community. So we start with the news that we received from our Commissioner of Education with regard to our schools that exited focus status. And that begins with School Number Twenty-eight, our elementary school, the Dwyer Technology Academy, the Edison Career and Technical Academy, and our Jefferson Arts Academy. So a special thanks to our principals, Salcedo Rodriguez for School Number Twenty-eight, former principal Diana Pinto Gomez for your work in the preceding school year that led to exit status, to Ms. Fatima Bay, who's the principal of Edison Career and Technical Academy, and Mr. Michael Aheda, principal of Jefferson Arts Academy. A special round of applause for having accomplished this success in this school year. This school year, we opened with William F. Halloran, School Number Twenty-two, brand-new facility, very exciting time, and we had the honor of being able to recognize the tremendous work of the School Development Authority in providing us with this wonderful environment for our children. We had the opportunity to dedicate the Charles Harris School, excuse me, we had the honor of dedicating our school in honor of our mayor, J. Christian Bowridge, wonderful opportunity because our mayor invests so much time at the Bowridge Finance Academy and meeting with students, really carving out the time to be able to discuss with them their futures, provides critical guidance, and with regard to the coursework that they're taking and how it will impact them moving forward, incredible commitment on his part, and we're grateful to have this opportunity. We had also the opportunity of dedicating our ninth-grade academy, name of Mr. Harris, who was really a legend in this school district, and grateful for the opportunity of working with his daughter, who has served in our district as a tremendous partner in providing critical training, and we hope future opportunities in terms of working with our students. Earlier this year, we had the opportunity of having the Gates Foundation visit School Number Three, an opportunity to come in and examine our Teach-to-One program, and we're incredibly impressed by the panel of students that spoke with regard to their day-to-day experiences and how impactful the program is. We had a visit from the former Commissioner of Education earlier in the school year at School Two, as an opportunity to visit the preschool blueprint, Children's Literacy Initiative Program, and really as an opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of our Director of Early Childhood, Tracy Crosby, and the amazing teachers that are creating opportunities for our students each and every day, and to see the excitement in our little preschoolers and how they're responding to these practices was truly phenomenal. Our students provided with a multitude of opportunities. This is just one, which is our annual college fair, which provides an opportunity to have the top academic institutions come to the Dunn Sports Center and opportunity for interaction with our students with regard to their futures. This school year, under the wonderful leadership of our board and our director, Diana Pinto Gomez, we held the first special needs resource fair this past Saturday, and a true success and opportunity for our parents to be able to gain valuable information for their needs. We held earlier this school year in partnership with Assemblywoman Quijano and also Councilman Nelson Gonzalez and our board, a resource fair for our families that suffered a terrible hardship of the impact of Hurricane Maria, and it was an opportunity to provide a variety of resources that are available to them, both at the state and the local level, and to ensure that they are properly supported. It's really a terrible story because the forecast is for a total of 200 schools that are scheduled to close in Puerto Rico over the next two years. So this is really traumatic, and any opportunity that we have to welcome families and to help them is certainly very important to our organization. We have the Elizabeth Public Schools Stuff-a-Bus for Disaster Relief, another notable effort to support our families in Puerto Rico that took place. We have the EPS Host Jets Play 60 program, and this was an opportunity to engage fourth and fifth-grade students across the district. Fabulous program that really focuses on healthy habits that include not only acknowledging the importance of exercise, but also healthy living, healthy eating, and really opportunity to acknowledge that work and to celebrate their accomplishments throughout the course of the year. We partnered with the Elizabeth Public Schools to ensure that the appropriate training was provided specifically around crossing safely. This is an area that our Elizabeth Police Department brought to our attention, that felt that they could be instrumental in speaking to our students and ensuring that they had good practices in place when they are walking in our community. Opportunity to address and acknowledge student voice was with regard to an important day, March 14th, where our high school students had the opportunity to voice their concerns to various elected officials, all the way from the U.S. Senate level right through freeholders, through city council, our mayor. Everyone was so incredibly responsive to participating in these important conversations, and I think that this was really a first step to many more town hall meetings that will occur in the near future, is an opportunity to engage our students. We have the annual opportunity of our students to participate in the Rutgers Youth Engineering Day, great onsite experiences that our children have, valuable experiences, and it certainly serves as a means to be able to help focus their attention moving forward. We have the Estuary Day, which raises students' awareness of the environment, and this is a valuable experience for our students, both elementary and high school. They have an opportunity to participate on an annual basis and present their projects and speak to the importance of environmental awareness. Each year, our U.S. Senators Menendez and Booker have the opportunity to host Academy Day at Rutgers University, and it's opportunity for our students that are pursuing military service, an opportunity for them to learn more with regard to the various branches, and to ask questions and receive valuable information from folks that are participating on this day. Our Dwyer Technology Academy granted the Honor Society charters, and this is a wonderful opportunity for our students. Mrs. Jimenez has really provided valuable experiences to our children, and certainly a variety of experiences that I wish I could spend the next five hours sharing with everyone that are taking place in the district, but wonderful opportunity to acknowledge their valuable work. We have also our partnership with Future Cities, which allows the opportunity to participate in leading towards the future, great experience that our students had engaging with notable figures, judges, various folks that have really imparted their knowledge to our children, and as a means to be able to help them to create goals that will help achieve their in the near future. School Twenty-eight was recognized by Eco Schools USA as a Green Flag School, and this is an initiative that they have been pursuing and working at being a green school, so certainly a great acknowledgement of the activities that they have designed over the course of the year. School Number Seven ranked among the top 25 schools in New Jersey earlier this school year, special work that's taking place in a variety of core subjects, as well as the electives that are presented to students on an annual basis. School Seven was also named as the 2018 New Jersey School of Character. As you know, this is another designation that we are pursuing to be a district character education, and this is something that we're striving for, and I thank the principals that have submitted their applications to Character.org for consideration, and I believe that in a very short time, we will be able to achieve that designation. Elizabeth High School ranks amongst the top 30 high schools in New Jersey. This was also published not too long ago. We have the amazing opportunity of one of our students at School Four that was selected to attend WE Day in Los Angeles, California, and not only was her project recognized by the WE organization, but also a great surprise that our student received was a $5,000 grant in support of her work, which has to do with environmental issues. It's a wonderful way to inspire a young learner. She was going to be featured on ABC and interviewed on her work, and you know, this work that takes place is as part of those enrichment periods that we have built into our school day. So it's not only the academic supports, but it's also the enrichment opportunities and partnerships as valuable as our organization WE Day gives us that opportunity to be able to fulfill these wonderful opportunities for children. So this is wonderful, and we look forward to hearing more on May 10th from this beautiful young lady. Our supervisor of phys ed, Joe Prisatula, received. Our supervisor of phys ed, Joe Prisatula, received notable award in the area of physical activity, and I believe is the Physical Activity Champion Award that he received. And really, this is reflective of the numerous initiatives that you have brought into all of our schools, and how you're always striving for our students to be able to do more and be aware of having healthy habits. So I thank you. Our Hamilton Prep student was accepted to three university. This was really quite an opportunity. The historically black college universities reached out and shared with us that they were hosting a college fair in Staten Island. While our students attended, and one of our students from Hamilton was accepted by three universities at this college fair, right on the spot, and just wonderful, wonderful. They immediately shared their communication and certainly intend on offering additional college fairs to our students in the near future. So just great, great opportunities, and this is what we do. This is exactly what we do. We pursue these opportunities for our students. It begins with a very strong foundation from preschool, and it continues on through elementary and through high school to ensure a bright future for all. Our Jefferson Arts students received an honorable mention in the State Courtroom Artist Contest. Incredible talent. We're going to be hosting the board meeting in June at Jefferson Arts Academy, and there will be a rich display of our students' talent all throughout the hallways, and incredibly proud of the great work that is taking place at Jefferson Arts Academy. Always wonderful to be able to share with our community the success. This is a former Dwyer student, bilingual student, that's now employed at Google. When she graduated from Dwyer, she went on to NJIT, and then from there was immediately employed by Google. So the success stories are incredibly valuable. Just today, we had a notable speaker at Halsey Academy and an opportunity to engage with our freshman and sophomore students, and to be able to tell that success story and to be able to carve that clear path and that journey that is so important for our students to hear and to be able to understand. And you know, this is what makes our lives just so wonderful, the fact that these opportunities for our children to take this education and be able to take it one step further. Our fabulous JROTC program that we have here at Halsey, I have to share with you, I experienced on Monday JROTC program in Virginia, and I was like comparing stats with them. And I said, "Well, we've achieved in these areas." And then they were comparing where they had achieved, and I think we outranked them.[934.12][934.12](LAUGHING). So it was a great, great experience. So kudos to our Colonel and our Master Sergeant, who worked tirelessly each and every day to provide incredibly valuable experiences to our students. And our athletics, great opportunity to highlight the fabulous accomplishments. And I will go through, I will go through these achievements. The star ledger, Elizabeth High School football, star ledger, all group five football, acknowledging Clarence Wilkins as the first team defense. Elizabeth High School Boys Soccer, number 19 in New Jersey, number eight in Group Four, Union County co-champions. The star ledger, all group boys soccer, acknowledging Henry Chavez as second team. The all-county boys soccer, Henry Chavez once again, first team. Jose Amaya, first team. Cesar Barrera, second team. Star ledger, acknowledging the Elizabeth High School girls soccer. The star ledger, all-conference girls soccer, acknowledging Mariana Torres for first team. And girls volleyball, Alejandra Cheveria, all-conference first team, and Narcisse Yellen, all-conference first team. Our winter highlights, our boys varsity winter track. The star ledger, all-star winter track, acknowledging the work of Gabriel Nash, his first team for the 55 dash. The NJSIAA meet of champions, once again recognizing Gabriel Nash for taking first place. He was the first Elizabeth athlete to win an indoor track event since 1991. Pretty impressive. NJSIAA group four champions, Gabriel Nash for second place in the 55 dash. And relay team took fifth place. NJSIAA North Two Group Four Championships, once again Gabriel Nash took second place. Genové Jonas took fourth place. Emile Allen took fifth place. The relay team took third place. Facundo Luna took third place. Tajir Tate took fourth place, and Mujeeb Ali took fifth place. Our boys varsity winter track, Union County Indoor Relay Track Champions. And as you could see before you, the relay team took all the places, fifth place, fourth place, second place, and acknowledging the work of the talent of Tajir Tate for second place in the shot putt, and Dakota Acosta, fourth place also in the shot putt. The girls varsity winter track, we had the NJSIAA North Two Group Four Champions, acknowledging Destiny Everett Scott, who took third place, and Yasara Breathwaite, who took fifth place, and our Union County Indoor Relay Track Champions. Relay team took fourth and third place. We continue on with wrestling, and we have our students in the District 13 Championships, Malachi Dai, who took second place, Christopher Candelario, third place, Jason Moreno took third place, and LeJuan Harris took third place as well. Our Union County Championships, once again, Malachi Dai took third place, and LeJuan Harris also took third place. Our boys swimming, Dylan Carvalho, Hugo Rebelletto, Alfredo Rojas, Vladimir Rojas. They swam the 200-yard medley relay in a record time, breaking a record that had previously stood for 31 years. Isn't that impressive?[1170.08][1170.08](APPLAUSE). Carvalho, Rebelletto, Rojas, and two students with the last name Rojas also set the record in the 200-yard free relay during the 17-18 season. And with our girls swimming, girls swimmers Lady Cabral and Valentina Cano and Gisele Negron and Paula Tamayo swam the 200-yard freestyle relay, breaking a 23-year-old school record in their first meet of the season. And this took place on December 5th. That's impressive. The girls went on to re-break their own record three more times, setting their best mark at the Union County Tournament with the time of, what, 1 minute and 54 seconds? Am I reading that correctly, Mr. Candelino?[1226.65][1226.65](LAUGHING). After setting the 200-yard medley relay mark, they proceeded to break their own mark four more times with the best of 2 minutes and 6 seconds in their final meet. They broke the old 400-year freestyle relay with a time smashing the old record by 10 seconds. Isn't that incredible? Amazing, amazing achievements. And that leads to these amazing opportunities with regard to students receiving athletic scholarships to the schools of their choice because they have achieved greatness. In the area of performing arts, our EPS was named a Best Community for Music Education once again. This has been an annual accolade that we have received, and this is really reflective of the amazing work that our music teachers, both instrumental and our chorus teachers, do each and every day. Our marching band won the Tournament of Bands competition. Three Elizabeth High School French A Sycorale Academy students qualified for the Region Two Jazz Band. School two hosted Jazz House Kits residency. Our annual event where our Elizabeth High School Band and String Orchestra plays a side-by-side with the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra, such an amazing opportunity for our students to participate with such talent. And teen arts, as I mentioned before, the annual display of the talents at the Union County Teen Arts Showcase. This is incredibly impressive because this is also breaking news. So we have on May 10th an event that is taking place, and it's where three of our Elizabeth Public Schools will be recognized by the New Jersey Department of Agriculture for Commitment to Healthy Eating. All right, so these are the VIP Award winners. George Washington, school number one. Jerome Dunn, school number nine, who have taken first-place VIP Award. And school number six has taken the third-place VIP Award. What is incredibly impressive is that we're going to have the Secretary of Agriculture that will be coming here on May 10th in order to share those awards with our schools. And that is the first time, Mr. Kennedy, would you say? The very first time that a Secretary of Agriculture visits Elizabeth to issue awards. So incredible accomplishment, and I thank our schools for their commitment.[1397.15][1397.15](APPLAUSE). We have our annual, and this is really how the work started. Our work started with the partnership with the Alliance for Healthier Generation, which was a partnership with the Clinton Foundation, American Heart Association. They essentially set the benchmarks with regard to the amount of activity our children needed to be engaged in, and also what they should and should not be eating. And that was where we began to pursue the bronze, the silver, and the gold awards. And I truly believe that as a result of this partnership, that has helped us with the award that I just recently shared with you with regard to the VIP Award for fresh foods. And that's also work that Mr. Prisatula has pursued and expanded to all of our schools, and I thank you for that. So this concludes the budget presentation. You know, I truly believe that this is representative of a budget that fulfills our, in accordance with our guiding principles of equity, high expectations, and excellence. I'm incredibly thankful to all that work in our organization. This is true service leadership that we are a part of. And on a day like today, Bring Your Child to Work Day, it's such a wonderful opportunity to be able to share what we do on a day-to-day basis and have our children experience it. And our commitment to the children that we serve, I thank you once again for this opportunity to present this evening, a budget which truly captures our priorities and is representative of an investment in all areas.
Thank you, Superintendent. I need a motion to adopt the resolution for the adoption of 2018-2019 school year budget.
I move to accept the 2018-2019 school year budget.
Second.
Any comments or concerns from the board members? Hearing none. Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neran.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Carvalho.
At this time, do I have any comments from the board members?
Yes, Madam President.
Board Member Neran.
Just want to commend the entire team for your arduous work in allowing for us to be able to get to this point in our journey to excellence and equity. You know, we have been focused on establishing a vision that would catapult this district to another level and become a national model. And you know, through the presentation that we are hearing tonight, we see that we're just one step further of getting to that point. So I just want to commend the entire team on your great work in working together as a team and supporting us. And I also want to commend my fellow board members for the great work that they've done in getting to this point and actually working as a board. And we've done a lot of work to just come together and just really start understanding the education process and moving forward and supporting your goals. And thank you to our Superintendent and the entire team.[1651.32][1651.32](APPLAUSE).
Any other board members?
Yes.
Board Member Marina Ortega.
I want to say thank you to our staff for your hard work. Thank you for each one of you. Thank you for my team who work in really hard. I want to say thank you again for everything you do every single day. I really appreciate.[1680.32][1680.32](APPLAUSE).
Any other board member?
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Mulhulter and his team, Mr. Kennedy, Superintendent Hugo Meyer, all of our directors, our supervisors, our principals, our vice principals, our staff, from the person who opens the door in the morning for the children to the last one who closes the door. None of this can happen without you, and together we have all put together a budget that's going to give us a good year, and we are one step ahead of the game. So thank you to each and every one of you for being a part of what we call a team.[1724.74][1724.74](APPLAUSE).
I need a motion to close the meeting.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy, roll call, please.
Bathalas.
Yes.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Marina Ortega.
Yes.
Neran.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Carvalho.
Yes. Thank you, and congratulations, everybody.[1755.74][1755.74](APPLAUSE).